I'd like to call today's meeting to order. We have a regular meeting on the 9th of June. Want to welcome everybody, especially those in the audience. We appreciate your attendance on a special Friday meeting, which means we can probably all go home after the meeting's over. I would ask our Spanish interpreter for an announcement, please.
Good morning. I do have a brief bilingual message that I will say first in Spanish and then repeat in English. Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Regina Santos Moreno y junto con mi compañero Hugo Santos estaremos proporcionando interpretación simultánea entre el inglés y el español. Si nos están acompañando en persona y quisieran escuchar la junta de hoy en español, tenemos unos auriculares disponibles para que lo puedan hacer. Si nos están acompañando en línea a través de Zoom, si están en computadora pueden buscar el icono en forma de globo que dice "interpretación", seleccionar "español" y dar clic en "done" para finalizar la acción. Si nos están acompañando por Zoom en teléfono o tableta pueden buscar el menú de tres puntos, buscar donde dice "interpretación de lenguajes", hacer clic en español y hacer clic en "done" para finalizar la acción. Por último, nos gustaría recordarles a nuestros oradores de recordar de hablar uno a la vez y a un paso moderado. So, as I said, good morning. We are providing simultaneous interpretation between English and Spanish for today's meeting. So if you would like to join us in Spanish for this meeting in person, we do have some listening devices available for you to do so. If you are joining us online via Zoom, if you are on a computer, you will have to look for the globe icon on the bottom part of your screen that says "language interpretation", select "Spanish" or "English" if you'd like to join us in English, and then hit "done" to finalize the action. If you are joining us on a phone or a tablet, look for the three-dot menu and then hit "language interpretation" and look for "Spanish" or "English", and hit "done" to finalize the action. Lastly, as always, we would like to remind all of our speakers to remember to speak at a moderate pace and use their microphones. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And I will now, before we call roll, we'll do the pledge of allegiance as soon as Ms. Frost gets here, and I will happily relinquish my seat.
Good morning. We will now do the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, so I guess I will lead the pledge of allegiance now. So in honor of the present day, before we begin, I just did want to remember and commemorate June 10th, that is going to be coming up Monday, June 19th, and to celebrate the legacy of our diverse community and what makes up our country and be able to celebrate the emancipation and freedom of all and our wonderful people. So I will have it there. And I will say, "Thank you very much." "We believe in you, to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic of Israel, for the nation, and the God of the people, with the freedom and justice for all."
I think that would be a good idea. Thank you, Arlene.
Mrs. Cardy? Mrs. Dany is absent today. Mrs. DeWort? Ms. Irman? Mrs. Frost?
Here.
Mr. Howell?
Here.
Mr. Porter?
And President.
Thank you.
And do we have any changes to the agenda this morning? Thank you very much. President and Board comments. I am breathless right now, so I'm not going to say anything except I'm glad I made it and glad no CHP were working today. Anyone, any other board members have comments? No? No? Okay. Then we will move on to public comments. Do we have any public comments today? No? Oh, my gosh, we're just zooming right through this. Information items. Associate Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction Ellen Barger will present a summary to the Board on how the Santa Barbara County Education Office supports districts in implementing Article 4.5 of the Educational Code, Local Control and Accountability Plan, and statewide system of support. Ellen?
Thank you so much.
Louise, a second? Okay. Thank you. And I know that you've all been waiting for Article 4.5. So that's what we're going to cover today. This is actually an annual report that we share with the Board, and then there is a report that we send along with our LCAP to the CDE, and I'll say a little bit more about that. So we'll start with the, and I believe you all have the slides in front of you, so we'll start with the presentation, and then after I've Cliff Notes it for you, then we'll give you a copy of the actual report to see as well. It is an information item. No action needed. So this is something that we had started. Oops. Make sure this is on. Is it up? Does it go up or down? Okay. Oh, it worked. Okay. There we go. So I'll just quickly go over the history and the purpose. This is part of the statewide accountability system, and you know the four components: the LCAP, the dashboard, differentiated assistance, and the statewide system of support. And then in 2019, this new requirement was added to provide a summary of the planned support for completing and reviewing of LCAPs, for providing differentiated assistance to districts, for supporting LCAP implementation, and collaborating within the statewide system of support. And so in the ed code, there's really required three goals, and so our report follows those three goals. The first is our duty, our authority, to support, review, and approve all LCAPs. Secondly, provide differentiated technical assistance. And third, support the implementation of those plans. And so in each of the sections, I'll give a quick overview, and then because we're at the place where we kind of straddle years, I'll say a little bit of an update and summary of what we did from the previous year, and then what the plans are going into the next year. So we'll start with LCAP. And the county offices of education really play a dual role in the LCAP. We have both authority to approve the plan, but also the opportunity to support planning and to influence the coherence of those plans. So our authority is very limited. There are just four criteria for approval that include following all the instructions, the template, and the ed code, making sure that there is sufficient budget to carry out the LCAP services, determining if they've met the increased and improved services requirement, and that they have done the calculation of the carryover obligations, and then implemented that into the new plan. But in terms of the opportunity, we also do quite a bit of coaching. So while we can't approve or require or disapprove of the choices, we have been able to impact the quality, the coherence, and just the integration of the plans over time and through our support. So the LCAP annual cycle is displayed up here. And so this report comes between two parts. So the first part, which starts at the beginning of the new fiscal year, July through September, is looking at the newest 2324 LCAPs. So we actually start the fiscal year with approval that we've been then working on, the support, all year. So although support comes before approval, kind of lays out like this, but you can see that we are going to start the summer with the approval, the four criteria. That also involves clarification process and approval letters. And then we start the whole cycle over again with preparing for the 2425 LCAP. And so this report is both looking back and looking forward. And so in our report to the state, we'll both report on all of the planning and support we gave the previous year as well as how we plan to go forward. And so a few highlights of that. If we take a look, in the support over this past year, we really did three things. We built our own capacity, built the capacity in our districts and charter schools, and then provided that support. And so there is a statewide system of training and calibration and a manual to make sure that all 58 counties are requiring the same criteria, interpreting the ed code the same way, and we also collaborate closely with the CDE. The CDE is the one that approves the county office LCAPs so that everyone in the ecosystem is using the same criteria, same expectations. And then you can see in the next part, as we're building our capacity for the LEAs, this year we added a new element, and that was a three-part training series that we started in the fall after the analysis of last year's LCAPs. When I say "last year's," it's actually the ones that our districts are carrying out. And then we continued to provide the customized support that we provide each and every year that gets very intense from February to April, and then it just gets fully intense as our districts are trying to get their LCAPs done. One of the reasons it gets so intense is that the May revised budget that comes out usually mid-May, this year did not come out until Thursday, the 25th, was essential for them to calculate exactly what their funds were and make everything coherent. Not everybody is as good as Bridgette and Shannon and our team. So they're intensely working right now. And that's, the final part of that is, we try to preview every district's LCAP if they'll share it with us so that when they take it to their Board for adoption, they know that all of the elements are there. Sometimes that happens, sometimes it does not. And so just zoning in a little bit on that capacity, I did say that we identified three areas this year for support and improvement, and one was educational partner engagement, data analysis and metrics, and goals and actions. And that three-part series was developed and delivered via an interactive virtual learning module. And in many cases, then, the teams came and replicated it with their educational partners and with their staffs. And then we offered individualized virtual follow-up lessons, sessions, and we're really seeing the evidence of impact in our early previews. And I'm looking at my colleague Steve Torres right now because he was one of the two architects with Sean Carey on creating that whole analysis and delivering it, and it really made a difference this year. And so our LCAP support in the coming year, after we do all of the work to analyze and to do the full-on review, which even after the previews can sometimes take as much as 30 hours per LCAP with our budget, with our fiscal and our program staff, and with clarifications, by September 15th, it's our goal to have all of the LCAPs approved so that the budgets can be approved. So that's the summer, and then it starts again with analyzing the changes, the LCAP cycle. You'll see in red, I included a few things that we are anticipating from the new trailer bill language. And so there will be a new template because we're at the end of a three-year cycle. So there will be a new template and quite possibly a bridge document. And then currently in the trailer bill language, there are provisions for a mid-year update. We did that once, but we think that that's coming back. So that'll be some new elements for everyone to enjoy. And this is another slide that just says what I just said. Great. Okay. In case I forgot. So our LCAP team, as you can see, there are quite a few folks who work on our LCAPs. And part of that is because it's such an intense time where everyone's come at once that we really need to utilize many, many people. But the other thing that's so nice about it is as so many of our directors in the CNI division are working on LCAPs, they really get to know the priorities, the metrics, the data from the districts with whom they're working. And our district financial advisors are matched up with the same folks whose budgets that they support and the districts that they support. So it is a cross-division collaboration that has been a real model for our districts too in how they do budgeting because they're thinking about what are the needs of the students, what do our data tell us, and that process has become much more collaborative through this LCAP. So you can see there, we've got some great folks working on this and, what is it, like Ocean's 13 doing the LCAPs? So that's our first goal, LCAP. Our second goal that we need to write about is providing the differentiated technical assistance. And those words, "differentiated" and "assistance," really ring true. So in the differentiated assistance, I start with this graphic because this is a visual of what that statewide system of support is. And it's really hard to talk about this linearly where you say, "How do you collaborate with the statewide system of support?" In the report, it's near the end, but I thought I would start here to give the picture. What you see is that county offices are right there at the base, and all of this work around this accountability system really depends on the relationships of the county office with the CCEE, the California Collaborative for Excellence in Education, with the California Department of Education, and then it's directly working with the local education agencies. Currently, differentiated assistance is only provided to districts, but next year, charter schools will also qualify for differentiated assistance. And then the local education agencies work with their school sites, and the school sites are often part of the differentiated assistance process. I want to say a little bit too about it. In differentiated assistance, there's really two tiers of support. One is the universal supports that we provide for all of our districts, and we do for our charters as well. And then there are the additional supports for qualifying districts. You'll hear the word "differentiated assistance", and generally people are talking about that tier two for the qualifying districts. The dashboard is what determines qualification. And this year, in December of 2022, the dashboard was released for the first time since 2019, as you remember all with the pandemic. And this year, in contrast to the past where all of the indicators had both a status and a change, which had a five-by-five metric of how is the LEA performing and how much has it improved or decreased, which created colors. This year only, it was just status because you can't compare the new data to four-year-old data. Thus, many, many, many more districts in the state qualified for differentiated assistance for that tier two. And in our county, there were 10 districts. Six that maintained their eligibility from 2019, but in many cases, they qualified with different indicators, different metrics, and sometimes even different groups of students. Then we had two districts that have qualified in the past but did not qualify in 2019 and qualified again, and then two new districts for whom this was the first time they qualified. And I'll talk about each of those. But I want to start with the dashboard right there in the middle because part of this past year and part of this plan really throws us back almost into two years of work because it's based on the 2022 dashboard, which came out in December, but that's from the 2122 school year. And so when you think about that, it just feels so long ago. I don't want to perseverate on that past that we're all trying to get back on, but just a few things about some of the trends that we saw. In terms of chronic absenteeism, of course, that was a really significant issue in many of our districts. And half of our districts had greater than 20% of all students considered chronically absent. Chronic absenteeism means that the students missed 18 out of 180 days. They missed 10% of the days or more. And all the districts that had enough students to have an indicator, the students with disability group in those districts was high or very high status for chronic absenteeism. And the thing that's interesting is that even this year there have been some persistent patterns in certain groups, grades, and conditions at certain remote schools or different. So although that was a bump, people are really looking at it carefully. Graduation rate. Our graduation rate in almost all cases is good. It's at the median for all students or higher, but it was more varied across districts for ELs, for students with disabilities, and for homeless students. We also had great variance in suspension and in our ELA, ELD, and the EL performance indicator. And we can see that there are certain places where it was very, very high and other places where suspensions were not an issue at all. And then in ELA, ELD, and ELPI, participation rates impacted performance for the very first time, and we worked through that this year. And 11 of our districts were very low for one or more student groups in ELA or math. Through the work that we did with everyone looking at data, it really raised some curiosity about the meaning of results because in many cases, people were wondering how accurate it was and really trying to compare it with other indicators of progress. So it really was important that all of these trends, whether a district qualified or not, in the universal supports, we spent quite a bit of time on preparing data, helping everyone with the dashboard reorienting to it with data and tools, and maintaining data display folders for each of our LEAs as we created data displays for them to use internally because they don't all have that ability to create all of that data. And it led to really great conversations at Curriculum Council and in our working with districts across the board. Another area, excuse me, was interpreting and responding to outcomes, as we talked about. The importance of having real conversations about the data latency and the validity as well as looking, as we said, around chronic absenteeism and group variance and the unequal impacts. And then finally, what's come out of this is really the new realities. One significant thing that we spent a lot of time on this year was the proportion of new educators or educators who had less than one or two years teaching outside of a pandemic situation. In some of our districts, as many, as much as 40% of their teachers have fewer than three years of experience. And so what that means is they haven't had significant work necessarily as a team, as a system, as a professional learning community, PLC, calibrating expectations. And so there's a lot of work around recalibration of expectations, not only because the teachers are new, but watching groups of students who have missed certain chunks of learning along the way. Also, social-emotional learning came to the forefront with student mental health concerns and everyone's social-emotional learning. And then also, we have new standards in computer science, new requirements at the school level, and great deals of interest in some of the new technologies and in the research around literacy, AI, technology. So there was a lot of work that happened in the universal supports. But now we'll move to the districts that qualified for the tier two or the level two of differentiated assistance. And I just want to take a moment to say, this is all of the research and training that our work is grounded in. It's not a matter of looking at data and jumping to a solution and saying, "We're going to do some interventions", but really working with the districts to build their capacity in data use and data inquiry. We are informed by improvement science and plan-do-study-act cycles. Implementation science is very important in this work in terms of readiness and systems impact. We do work in adaptive schools, cognitive coaching, compassionate systems, design thinking, and asset framing as well. And so as I said, we had 10 districts who qualified and six that continued, two that were eligible prior, and two new districts. And so what that support looked like truly, truly varied from district to district. But we co-created the process with each and every superintendent. We customized our data preparation and exploration to bring in some things that they were already working on, although we had everyone look at the entire dashboard. But we were also ready with some internal data as well. The data exploration included not just focusing in on the indicators that qualified the district, but also the historical landscape, trends, context in the areas of academic outcomes, but as well climate and people engagement. And so through those processes, it often leads to further data inquiry. And in other cases, especially with those we had been working with, it just helped to clarify priorities and focus the work. And so in some cases too, we have some next steps, and in other cases, we are, oops, wait, I hit that too fast, sorry. We have two of our districts with whom they're going to have some senior staff starting July 1. So we're going back in to do again with some of the new staff and get those focus areas. We continue to work with the districts throughout the following year, so it's not just trying to get it done between December and June, but we continue to provide those supports. And so with, you know, our differentiated technical assistance, these are three of our overarching goals. Although the process is customized and individualized and often uses plan-do-study-act cycles, we really also take a long-term approach, not only to work on the priority areas, but to help the districts develop their capacity to engage in improvement science themselves. And so our differentiated assistance team is up here with Rachel Thawver as the lead, and Sean Carey, Lauren Arringarren, Ray Avila, Tiffany Carson, and Ann Roundy Harder are part of the core team. And that group meets at least monthly with our six-county consortium that we develop our own abilities to do this together and collaborate. But then we also have some other directors because of the work that they were doing in those particular districts or because of their expertise. And so it's a lot of people, but it's a lot of work. But just like the LCAP, this really helps to provide that coherence and overlap. And so for our third goal, which is the support for the implementation of our plans, so over the next 45 minutes, no, just kidding. It's in absolutely everything we do. At all of our CNI meetings, and you'll see this in the report, how all of this integrates, braids, blends, overlaps, and layers in the work that we do through our LCAP teams, our differentiated assistance team, our entire CNI teams, including our credential programs from top to bottom. And so the last step in all of this is there is a report that we have copies of that Arlene will pass out. It's a It's a 20-page report that has goals, indicators, metrics, and the like. And so that's the report that we will send to the CDE. And so if you want to take a look at that and then ask me any questions after, that's great too. But I'll pause here and say thank you for listening to the report on section 4.5. And what questions might you have? Yes, Mr. Howell.
A comment and a question. A comment, an observation, and a question. It really was a great presentation. And I realize some of these timelines and the diagrams really helped me. And I'm guessing I speak for others, but I'm sure making it look so simple was really challenging, and it really, really helped as opposed to a bunch of words on a page. So my compliments on that. I think I'm glad I'm not going to be testing on all the acronyms. But it would really help every time an acronym, maybe the first two times an acronym is used, put in perenns what it stands for. And most of us can figure it out from there.
Great suggestion.
Not all of them, PLC, but there are a couple that were new to me. So that would be helpful. It's my observation, a question, realizing it, this is so dependent, no matter how talented you and your staff are, which is at the very top. Is there much of a turnover in the district so that you really get someone ready to go on this, and then you have a meeting with them and there are three new people? Is that, is that an issue?
You are absolutely correct. First, thank you for that reminder and suggestion on, on living in, living in the sea of acronyms. Absolutely. For one of the districts, I think we have worked with four or five different configurations of leadership. And so this is an ongoing, what do you call it? An ongoing process, and everyone changes over. And so this idea of as we start to get going and we do this data and in many cases, then we are re-engaging in some of the same data the following year. And even as I mentioned, two of our districts, they're going to have key people that start July 1. So they said, okay, we want you to come back and do the initial work again just so we can re-engage in it. So it's an astute observation. Thank you. Okay.
Thanks. Excellent presentation. After 29 years of government service, I will tell you, I, I get acronyms and how they're used. You do a great job, though, although I agree with Joe, just a little bit better would help. But I don't see how y'all do it with the, with the acronyms. Very professional, and SBCEO is able to manage this system with great expertise. And I, I thank all of y'all for being able to do that. Just a couple of comments. You know, we use a lot of words these days. Excellence is one we don't use so much anymore. So I kind of look through the, you know, my prism is excellence. An 80% graduation rate, I, I really hope the median can be raised above that to, to count for success. English language learners, I always worry, when we worry about progress on that, improving that, because every year it's a new cohort starting at zero, and you can't improve that. So just if you can measure the improvement of a cohort as opposed to the whole system every year, I think that would be very helpful for, for what it's worth. The board has no part in any of this except for our own LCAP. Y'all are the ones, the superintendent is the one that approves district LCAPs. So my, my question really is, at our level as senior education leaders, is the LCAP the right thing? And I'm not looking for an answer. Every year it grows. It's like a Hydra. You know, you get them to take off one little piece and it grows 30 more new big pieces. It gets bigger and bigger every year. Admittedly, right now, the data is chaotic coming out of the pandemic. You can't compare anything with anything. And the kids are all still pretty squirrely, if I can use a scientific term, you know, being able to pay attention in school. So is the LCAP right? Is that the right thing? We can't fix it. It's a state issue. But as we talk to our counterparts at CDE and the State Board of Education, is this the right thing? It's a huge amount of bureaucracy. It takes up a huge amount of y'all's time, and is it worth it? The same schools show up on our, those who qualify, almost the same ones from year to year. We don't see improvement, although now some of those schools and districts are flooded with money through LCFF. And does it make a difference? Those are the kind of things I wonder as I watch you all grind so hard to do this in a very excellent way. Does it make a difference at all?
I really appreciate that question, and I think that that question should always be at the forefront of all policymakers' minds to say, does this thing accomplish what we intend for it to accomplish? And when I look at our role, one of the tasks that we take is we do, we are involved when asked and when allowed to give input on certain things. Doesn't mean it always happens. But then once it happens, our goal is to say, here is this thing that our districts have to do. How do we leverage it to help them do what they know they need to do? How do they use this process to strive for excellence and to operationalize their vision, their mission, and their values through this? And that's the one place where, because we are there with them over time, that's the piece that I meant when I said we've been able to have some impact. Because as we get to know them, we can coach and ask these questions and say, you've been doing this really great thing, and I don't see that in here. And I see this other word salad here. And so how might we really have this document tell folks what's important to you within the constraints of it? Notwithstanding exactly what you said, which is the fact that many of these are hundreds of pages. And it is, I like the Hydra, you know, but the, the original architects of it are gone, and new people are adding on without necessarily looking at the impact, the redundancy. And so I think that's a really good question for policymakers. I think it's a really good question for all of us. And in the meantime, we'll continue to support our districts to take the things they have to do to do what's right for children.
Thank you. And one thing I do not question is your excellence at making this, making, supporting our districts and our kids.
Thank you.
So thank you for that presentation, and I really appreciate the comments that were made, Joel, in terms of the presentation, and Bruce. Just really questioning the process of the LCAP and its efficacy and, and the excellence of our students. And it segues beautifully to the idea that I was thinking about as the dashboard, because that's another, if you will, in this process of the metrics. And you spoke a little bit about, you know, the validity of the data from the dashboard and re-establishing the standards and expectations. And I do, from my understanding of the dashboard, there were some changes to the way the metrics were quantified, if you will. And so that also skewed some of the data points that we're using for the LCAP. So I was just wondering if you could speak to high level, you know, anything going to that, about some of those dash, the metrics that affected those data points that we're using? And then can you speak more to the idea of re-establishing the standards and expectations? And what that is actually will look like or looking like?
Great questions. Where we were questioning that concept of validity, we were asking, if we think back when many of the students were testing last year at this time, after the year of in and out of school, and, and our, our students were exhausted. Many, many folks even knew of their own children who did not give their all on the test. So that was one of the elements to say, did that, did that, does that test results? Which it is a valid assessment. But under the conditions, does it really reflect what students know going into the new year? Or does it reflect the exhaustion and the mental state of children at that time? And so that's why there was the need to really triangulate that with other achievement data to say, because people really want to know, where are our kids? How much learning are, you know, was missed? So that's what we were saying about the validity of the data in reflecting how much students really know versus how they did on that day particularly. The changes you asked about were that idea that status and change came together in a five-by-five matrix in the past to give a color, like a heat map color, red being the worst, blue being the best. And because there was not previous year data to compare it to, many of our districts, like we have one district that when the administration got there, their scores on everything were just incredibly low. And they have not qualified because they've made such growth each year. This year, they didn't have the growth to help show, you know, what had happened. The third part, standards and expectations. When I use the word standards there, I mean content standards. So, you know, there's, there are standards at each grade level that describe what students should know and be able to do. And so during the pandemic, educators had to narrow and choose and prioritize what got taught, what got in, you know, what, what received intervention. And now that we're back full-time and things look a little bit more like we have the instructional minutes and days and attendance, it's re-engaging with understanding what are those expectations at each grade level for each subject? And what the assessments will look like and how teachers will know if students are making appropriate progress?
My question is, how is this effectively communicated to parents in both English and in Spanish? And community stakeholders as well to enlist their aid and support in driving toward improvement?
Which, which part communicated?
The LCAPs for each district claim the goals and the marching orders, if you will. Is there, I know we have public hearings, et cetera, but are districts charged with communicating this in plain language?
Absolutely. There, one of the sections of the LCAP talks about the, the educational partner engagement. And we specifically have to check off that they met with all of these different groups to engage. Part of what we offered this year was some support in ways to get parents more engaged. You'd be surprised, but most parents don't want to show up to a meeting to look at data. You know, they want to show up and see their kids sing. They want to show up and, and do all of that. So our districts have been working on better communication and more ways to actually interact and engage families deeply in how this happens.
Yeah, I know, that's a challenge.
A lot to do, absolutely. Continuous improvement.
That was wonderful. Thank you very, very much. Really appreciate your work and your team's work. This is incredible. All right, LCAP, Local Indicators Report. And this is going to be presented by Bridget, oh, there she is. By Bridget Paulus. If I would have looked up, I would have seen that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ellen did such an eloquent job of really connecting LCAP, differentiated assistance, and dashboard all together. I'm really focused in on just one little area today for today's presentation, the local indicators. And let me grab my clicker here. Yes, and yes, and back to our, our specific LCAP. So let me see what's going on here. Here we go. So to begin with, I just want to set out a definition of what is a local indicator. The Local Control Funding Formula defines a local indicator as priorities where data is not collected at the state level, but instead is based on locally collected data that an LEA will measure and report on through the dashboard. There we go. I'm like, where do I need to point? So you can see there's a table here, and I just want to explain this a little bit. Legislation lays out that there are eight state priorities for districts, and there are 10 for county offices of education. And you can see those on the far left there. Of that, of those state priority areas, five include state indicators, which are measured by statewide assessments or data that is input into the California Longitudinal Pupil Achievement Data System, or CALPADS. And as Ellen was speaking, just to kind of connect back to her presentation, when we're looking at districts who qualify for differentiated assistance, we're really looking at those five state indicators. Then on the far right column, we have our local indicators. And there are five local indicators identified for districts and seven for county offices of education. And again, those are based on local data. And these are all connected, all three of these columns are connected to our LCAP in that the eight priority areas are reflected in the LCAP goals. And both the state and local indicators are reflected in the metrics and are annually, annually reflected on the dashboard. And so we spoke a little bit, or Ellen spoke a little bit about the dashboard and how that dashboard informs the development of the LCAP. And since these local and state indicators are annually reported on the dashboard, when an LEA is developing the LCAP, it uses that data as one area to look at and to assist in identifying areas of strength and need. And it is really the vehicle for LEAs to review its progress, articulate our plan in addressing our areas for identified need and commuting, communicating its plan to our educational partners. And so that LCAP, and through this process, the goal is that by engaging in this cycle of review and improvement, student outcomes will improve. Here, we're going to really hone in on those local indicators. And so for the local indicators, the State Board of Education developed instruments for an LEA to measure and report progress on each of the appropriate priority areas. And districts and CEOs go through a process of rating themselves. And we look at our data reflectively and honestly. And so for JCCS, what we do is go through a process with our leadership team in evaluating each of the local indicators. And also with our Transitional Youth Services team for one of those county office local indicators related to foster youth. And the assessments that we went through, the ratings and the narratives, I believe that the board received a handout for, with all the local indicators, correct? The report? Yes, I know the other one right there. Yes. Which includes how our self-assessment, so I just wanted you to have that. And a district or CEO has met, by the state, it's considered met, every local standard if they do three items. The first is to annually. The first is to annually go through this process of measuring our progress. Secondly, we need to report the results at a regularly scheduled board meeting, which we are doing today. And then, thirdly, we will report those results to the public through the publication of the California School Dashboard. In terms of timeline on the local indicators, from January to June, we really collect and evaluate our evidence for our local indicators and then use that data to inform the writing of our LCAP, which the board reviewed at the public hearing last week. And then before July, first, we need to present the local indicators to the county board in conjunction with LCAP adoption, which will be taking place in just a few moments. And then finally, again, we'll report our data through the dashboard that will be published sometime later this fall. And so for our juvenile court and community schools, by going through this process, we have met all of our local indicators in the seven identified areas. And my presentation was rather short. That is the last slide for today. And I will say thank you. And I can't figure out how to do it. And ask if there are any questions. Excuse me.
Hi. This is a silly question, but-- Ellen, does your department then support Bridget in her work on the LCAP? Or because this is at a county-level program, is that outside of what you review?
So that's a great question. So our LCAP is actually reviewed by CDE, the California Department of Education. If we were to receive differentiated assistance, that would also come through the state level, through CDE. But we are, we do participate, our, our little mighty team. We do participate in offerings of professional development that Ellen's division puts together for districts in terms of looking at our data, looking at the template that comes out. So it is a little bit of a cross-collaboration there as well as we report up to the state.
And, and all county, district programs throughout the state, their LCAP goes to the CDE?
Correct.
Okay. That same process. So that isn't unique for our situation at all?
Correct. Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Other questions you may have? Yes, Mr. Howard.
Once again, that LCAP was excellent. The writing was excellent. And I just wanted to highlight the professional development that you addressed for the JCCS educators. I think that is such an excellent idea that, that came forward and it's very targeted. And I just would love to hear at a future date, you know, how the, the response to the, to the, you know, professional development that they went through, to hear if there, if it actually was effective or not.
In, in response to the professional development that's spoken in the LCAP?
Yes.
For our teaching staff?
For your teaching staff, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I understood.
Yes, exactly. Interested to know. Thanks.
Great. Other comments or questions today?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I think it does help when we look at the Hydra that is growing for the LCAP. It really does help when we focus on what is done with it and what are the outcomes and what is the result? And how does it contribute? So we don't lose sight of that. It, it gets very complicated and difficult. And I appreciate the staff here and their work to cut through that and get to the gist of it, which is the purpose of it and how we do. I don't know how you would encourage parents because, you know, they want to see the results of their child. They're not really even interested in how the districts do or that. It's, it's an interesting challenge, for sure. Okay. And we will move on to the action items. Recommend adoption of the Santa Barbara County Education Office 2324 LCAP, including the budget overview for parents. I will entertain a motion. Any-- any discussion? I will call for the vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Okay, moving on to item 11. Recommend the adoption of the 2324 County School Service Fund Budget. Do I--
A motion to approve? Thank you, Michelle. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Do we have any discussion about the budget? The proposed budget? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. The next item is adjournment.
Can I say something real quick?
Of course.
And I was taught to do this by Mr. Howell.
Oh, okay.
And that is, just to say thanks. I mean, the budget by itself is yet another Hydra. But, but hard, especially in, in any public agency. But education, especially in a, in a county office of education with extra ancillary missions like we have. My congratulations to you. And then, of course, like I said, with the LCAP, great job, y'all. Super job. So you should all be very, very proud of the quality of your work. Because I think if I speak for the board, we're all very proud of you.
Very, very proud. We will now adjourn. I need a motion to adjourn to the next regular meeting on July 6. Oh, do I have a motion? Mary Beth, Anna, second?
A second.
Audrey? Discussion, I have a question about the time of that meeting. I had a note in my calendar that could have been totally random of a different time for the starting of that meeting. Or is it 2:00?
August is the 4:00 start.
Okay, so July would be the regular 2:00 time? Yes. And August, just for everyone to be able to put it ahead on their calendar, would be 4:00?
That's correct.
Yes. I have to book my puppy sitter. These important things. Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain, if you would abstain from that. Motion passes. We are adjourned.